Welcome to the December 2015 meeting of the Town of Kent Planning Board. Please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda tonight is approval of the planning board minutes from November 2015. I'll ask for a motion to put it on the table.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion or changes to the planning board minutes from November 2015?
Didn't see anything.
Being no discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve the planning board minutes from November 2015.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is the Town of Kent Roadmark Public Hearing and Amended Site Plan Change of Use Continuation from November. I think we closed this public hearing already, didn't we? We did, yeah. So this is just continuation of the amended site plan application.
Good evening, Robert Cameron, Putnam Engineering. I'm here representing the applicants for Towners Roadmark. It's an existing gas station with garage on New York State Route 52 in Towners Road. We are proposing to remove the garage use and install a convenience store in the old garage area.
Thank you. We have any comments from the planning consultants? Who's up first?
Good evening, Bruce Barber, Town Environmental Consultant. My comments are, I have no additional comments. And I've read the resolution that Neil prepared earlier, and I have no additional comments on that as well.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Bill, do you have any memo on this? Any comments you want to put on the record?
I don't know if you want me to say I wrote down this.
No, that's fine.
Those are correct.
Okay, so I think the issues that we still had to hash out were the relocation of the bus shelter, rewording of note number four to remove the reference to existing use, and incorporate our code definition of motor vehicle service station per our planning consultant. And I think Neil will probably go over that right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Neil Wilson, Town Planning Consultant. I don't have a report, what I had and had distributed yesterday by email, excuse me, is a proposed special use permit and amended site plan resolution. I just wanted to go through very quickly, there are a bunch of recitals in here about compliance with the special use permit and site plan criteria that are in our zoning code. I won't belabor those unless, of course, somebody, one of the board members has any questions. I just wanted to go very quickly through the conditions of approval that we had actually talked about at the workshop. And actually, the first question I have is for, actually, Bill Rhodey. Normally, I have respond to the comments of Bruce Barber, Bill Rhodey. In this case, Bill, do you have a review memo more recent than the one from the November meeting?
No.
Okay, all right. So what I'll do is I'll, I will insert that last review memo date. I think most of those items have been covered, but I'll just sort of dot the i. And that's actually on page three of the draft resolution, item number one at the bottom of the italicized type. Let's see, so starting, actually, again, on the bottom of page three, number four, and then it jumps over to 4A on the top of page four. Again, we had discussed this at the workshop, about amending note number four on the plan to provide that it states that approved uses motor vehicle service station excluding vehicle repair, bodywork, and painting. The definition of motor vehicle service station in our code includes sale of gasoline, a convenience store, but also repair work, and it actually excludes body shop, but we'll just sort of dot the i here. In this case, they're converting the repair facility into the convenience store. We just want to make sure that it's clear that there will be no vehicle repair, bodywork, or painting. And then note number 21, this was the discussion on the full service sign, which I guess Rob will probably discuss with you in a minute. What we were looking for is to actually have signs put up on the approaches to the gas pumps. You see, you know, you pull in, you say self-service, you see full service. We want to make sure that that is highlighted on the approaches to the pump high enough so that a driver can see that it says full service only. And so that's what that note, amended note number 21 in 4B is about, is that they are to install the signs. I'd like to talk with Rob a little bit further about whether or not this is sufficient in terms of the size of the type, but that's something that I think we can work out going forward as he works on the conditions of the approval, and ultimately be a detail that would be put on the site plan and dimension out exactly what, you know, the size of these things would be. Number five speaks more to the idea of the size and final dimension of the full service sign. Number six is a change to the existing note on the plan that just says new monitor well installed, to say install new monitor wells, replacement for monitor well number one, which apparently was covered up or just otherwise disturbed by some prior activity.
That's a good question there.
Yeah.
Because I had made a note that we want to, there's going to be a quarterly monitor report.
Yeah, that's actually a note already on the site plan.
And it says it goes to the, it goes to the Town of Kent.
Okay, yeah, you know what? We can modify that to have it state that it'll go to the planning board.
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
To the planning board?
To the planning board, and building inspector, right? Did we say building inspector? What did we say?
This is, this is the DEC quarterly monitoring report we're talking about. I guess the question is, what's the board's preference? And Bill, do you find they, those, that information useful?
No.
As part of your, okay. So maybe just to the planning board, I mean, Bill would have access to that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will add that. So what I will do, so what I'm going to do is break this down, so there'll be a 6A that'll say install new monitor well, the language I have here, and then a 6B that will modify the note to provide that the quarterly report will come to the planning, Town Planning Board, not just to the Town of Kent.
Perfect.
Okay. And those were the changes from the, from the draft, the original draft that I had provided the board at the November meeting. So with those, with those changes, that's the recommendation, is to adopt this now. Just also, there is a recitation in here, as there was in the original draft from November, that this is a type two action, there's no secret review required or secret action.
Okay, anybody have, on the board, have any questions for Neil? Okay, Rob, do you have any, anything else you want to bring to our attention before we?
Yes, and I'd like to discuss the, I brought this little.
Grab the mic there, please. Grab the mic?
I brought this little sketch of the signs that we could put on a pump, so I think it would be better to put the signs right on a pump, on each pump. Was that what you were thinking, Neil?
Yeah, I mean, we see it today, so when you, you know, you're pulling up to the pump, you're coming in, sort of into the island, somewhere on the edge of the pump, there, you typically see self-serve, full service, and it's up high enough so that obviously, you know, a driver can see it.
Actually, I was, I was thinking about putting something like this on the face of each pump. And instead of saying only, it would be full service pump, I mean, does only preclude somebody from pumping their own gas if they wanted to?
Yes, that's exactly the intent.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, because there are other requirements here that says that they always have to have somebody, an attendant, pumping the gas. So that is exactly the intent.
Okay. So you're not going to let me pump my gas there anymore?
No, you'll be inside buying coffee and donuts.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I mean, that was the main condition of approval that we discussed for several months.
Yes, I understood that.
And it's, and it's to avoid, you know.
Yeah, I just didn't like the only word.
Yeah, only is the most important word, actually. Also, while you're up there now, Neil, we discussed at the workshop that we want, when we reach the final agreement on where the signs, signs are going to be, we want that on the map, on plan.
Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely, yes, yes. That's actually called out here.
It is, okay.
The notation needs to show up on the map where the sign, where on the pumps, the pump island, these signs are to appear, as well, as well as the dimensions and all that other good stuff.
Right. And of course, the bus shelter, we understand, is, you know, that's out of your hands, you're reading on a county, but have you had any further communication from them on that?
I just recently sent some additional requests, and I have not heard a response yet.
Okay.
But the requests are there, they are aware of it, I guess they're working on something.
What they work on, I suppose.
Hopefully, they're working on the something that I want.
Yeah. All right, then, Neil, we're in a position to ask for a motion to grant a conditional approval on the application.
Yes, yeah, so the motion would be to approve the resolution as amended, as we have discussed, breaking down 6A and 6B, and the changes to the notes that we've already discussed as amended.
Okay, so I'm going to call for a resolution to grant approval to the Town of Kent Planning Board Special Use Permit and Amended Site Plan Approvals with the additions and amendments as just laid out by our planning consultant, Neil Wilson. Someone make the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Phil? This is a roll call, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, Phil. Janice, there's a roll call vote. I vote aye. Janice?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Glenna?
Nay.
Dennis?
Aye.
Motion carries. Pass that down to Vera, please. So you're good to go, as you meet the conditions on the site plan, let us know, and when they're all, they're all met, we'll sign the plan. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Gold Fine Rin Project on Daffodil Lane in Kent, some erosion control plan for review. I know we have some memos on this. Would you come up on the microphone, please, and identify yourself?
Hi, I'm Michael Rin.
The property owner?
Yeah, I represent the property owner. I am not the property owner. John Correll has another meeting in Fishkill, he's coming, might be a little late.
Do you want us to move you down the agenda?
Yeah, that would be okay with me, if it's all right with you guys.
I have no objection. Anybody have an objection to moving this farther down? Okay, thanks. We'll move on to Putnam County Savings Bank, which is an amended site plan application for the installation of a generator and a propane tank. Get on the microphone, please.
But Esposito, we have.
Oh, did I skip one?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong agenda.
I have too many agendas.
That's okay, tell me which one you want me to talk about.
Oh, let's go, let's go on. Where do you have Hilltop? Okay, yes, here we go, on the file, Hilltop. Hilltop it is.
All right. Dawn McKenzie from Insight Engineering, we are the civil engineers for the Hilltop Estates subdivision project. Mr. Esposito is out of the state and not available to make it to the meeting tonight, so I'm here on behalf of him. And we're here requesting an extension of approval for the project, and I'm going to give you a status update on where the project's at. Basically, we have gotten all of our outside agency approvals now, and I believe the only thing that's left for him to do is to post the bond. And what happened with the outside agency approvals is, we expected them to take two months, and they took significantly longer than we thought they were going to. It actually took six months to get final sign off on those. And unfortunately, the market for this type of housing has not improved, and Mr. Esposito is concerned about posting such a large cash bond in such a bad economy. He's actually considering his options right now, you know, one of which is to build the road, build the houses on spec. A second option would be to build the road and sell the lots, and a third option might be to sell the whole project. And what he'd really like is some more time to make that decision. So we're looking for an extension to give him time to do that.
So all agencies have given a final approval?
That's my understanding, yes, and I believe there was a letter submitted with supporting that as part of the request for an extension.
Okay, so just to be clear, is he requesting that we waive the posting of the bond?
No, not at all. He's looking, he's not, he's not, he's, would prefer not to have to post it at this time, he's looking for an extension.
I'd prefer not to pay my mortgage this month, too.
Well, he's looking for an extension for the approval.
Okay.
And it's our understanding that your code allows that.
Actually, the board granted the 90-day extension at the November meeting.
Conditioned on, on this appearance, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, but the 90-day extension carries to, I forget the date, in February.
Right.
What appears to be happening, and it's, you know, kind of got on everybody's radar because this, I think, was the second or the third time that we had received a request for an extension, literally at the last minute.
Right.
You know, it's kind of one of those failure to properly calendar the matter. But it did appear, certainly to me, and I think to members of the board and my fellow consultants, that this seemed to be one where he's asking for extensions, and, you know, everybody understands that he doesn't necessarily want to put the monies up, but he seems to be otherwise ready to have everything done so we can sign drawings and have the chairman sign the map and just sort of complete the process. Instead, we're carrying this item, you know, month to month to month on these extensions, and yet he has his other agency approvals. So I guess the question is, how much longer do we need to kind of string this thing along? And that's why we had requested your presence here tonight, basically to convey the message. You know, we need to wrap this thing up, and we understand the concern about putting up such, you know, a large amount of money. He doesn't necessarily have to construct everything, but he does need to complete the process, and we're anxious to have him do so at the earliest possible time. So calmly, February extension with appropriately timed request that we would receive in January for the February meeting, that question will come up again.
Right.
As to how long the, the planning board wishes to continue to grant extensions on something that is complete, but it's a money matter that the applicant simply doesn't want to post the necessary bonds. So that's kind of the message you could take back, I guess, to your client, and let him know that we're going to be asking that question, you know, when this next 90-day period is up in February.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, something else that I'd like to point out, you know, John asked me to mention it, John Watson, that, you know, we deal with other towns, and they allow the applicant to post a surety bond as opposed to a cash bond, you know, so that, and I know that's not the policy in this town, but I was surprised to hear that, you know, when he told me that, because in other towns, we're allowed to post surety bonds, and, you know, that would be a separate subject, but, you know, so I just wanted to point that out, and I have other towns that we deal with, you know, on similar types of projects, and they've been, they understand, you know, that the economy's bad, and it's taking longer to find buyers for certain types of projects, and, you know, we have another project in the town of Poughkeepsie that I've dealt with, we use a similar type of subdivision, and, you know, he went through the whole process and got it approved, you know, and we rush, rush, rush to get it done, and then the market changes, and, you know, it's a.
Yeah, no, again, we're, we're certainly not unsympathetic, and, you know, we do know, I mean, Mr. Esposito originally came in, probably, I think, sometime around 2005, 2006, or it was a different layout, it was a different consultant at the time, maybe it was even earlier than that.
It was a while ago.
And the economy tanked, and basically, they went away for several years, but he came back after the economy appears to have improved, so, you know, kind of rolls the dice and, you know, decides to go forward with it. I think, you know, it's really more a matter of managing the agenda and, and sort of economical use of the planning board members' time and having to sort of deal with this every 90-day period thing. And I certainly understand the, the questions about, you know, cash or a letter of credit or a bond, I mean, the bonds are certainly cheaper to obtain, they are also more difficult. When it comes time, if there's a failure to perform, it becomes an argument with the insurance company to go and collect, which is why we do cash or a letter of credit.
All right, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that's not even a planning board issue, correct? Isn't that the town board would have to make that change?
It really isn't. It's a matter of when the, you know, when the, the, it's sort of the determination is made to go forward with a project, when the issues of performance, security come up, it's typically left to the attorney as to quote form, which means, in the simplest case, either a letter of credit or cash. In fact, I think our code, at least in terms of the stormwater side, requires cash. I don't necessarily think that's the case off the top of my head for the road security, although, again, you know, it's if, if the town has to go after the security for failure to perform, it's much easier to go after a letter of credit or have cash on hand. So, but again, this is something for further discussion. But at this particular point, the only thing that is holding, holding up the project from getting to the point where the chairman can sign the drawings, seemed to be a money matter, and I guess that's something for the board to consider when we have our next discussions in February.
Right. And I'd also like to just emphasize the point Neil made, and not singling out this specific application, although it's happened repeatedly, you know, we have a cutoff date for filing for the next meeting. If your extension is going to expire before the next meeting, you need to file in time to be on our agenda, so everything can be reviewed by our consultants. And it's, it's become endemic, really, with, we probably have a half a dozen applications that have come to us literally days before a meeting, saying that their approvals are going to expire, and they should have sent their paperwork in, you know, three weeks earlier, and we've been accommodating them, but we're going to stop. So you might want to take that message back to whoever needs to hear it.
All right, so the bottom line is, you've already granted the extension.
Right.
Until February.
And you just met the condition of approval by coming here, so.
All right, good. So, all right, and I will, I will pass that message along.
You're already a month into it now, so start thinking about the next one.
Understood.
Okay.
I'm wondering if the board would in the future consider granting two 90-day extensions, but that's an issue for another day. Okay, thank you very much.
I think we actually have done that on occasion, haven't we?
Yeah. We'll do two 45-day extensions.
Well, you know, actually, I was hoping for 180-day or two 90-days, or maybe a six-month. Anyway, thank you. Next project?
Yeah, you want to stay up there for Putnam County Savings Bank?
Excuse me?
You want to stay up for, you're for Putnam County Savings Bank?
If that's okay.
Okay, sure. You're not ready, right? Mr. Rin, you're not ready.
Oops.
Once again, Dawn McKenzie from Insight Engineering, and I'm representing Putnam County Savings Bank with their Kent branch at 256 Route 52 in the Town of Kent. And I'm here tonight because the bank is looking to install a generator, it'll be an emergency backup generator and a propane tank to fuel the generator at the back of the existing branch on Route 52. I know there's been some correspondence about it and some discussion.
Okay, our, our questions on this were whether or not this actually needs an amended site plan application and possibly a zoning variance. And I'll ask Neil to come up and address these points, and I think Bill Rhodey has an opinion on it as well, and see if we can hash out.
Yeah, thank you, Neil Wilson. The underlying project is, I think it's fair to describe it as de minimis. It's, it's a generator with a, with a propane tank that power the generator during times when they lose power at the bank. So it's, it's a fairly minor matter in the scheme of things, but it also, it does require an amended site plan approval. The, the package that we received made a specific request for a waiver of site plan. We bounced around this, this idea of a waiver of site plan a few years ago, we could never quite get it right, it's just easier to say, you need an amended site plan approval, and so that's, that's where we've come down. And I believe we received a copy of the written application form and a formal submittal and all of that. One of the things that we did discuss at the workshop based on the original plan is the location of the propane tank, which is, which would be on a pad. The, except, it's, it's, the generator and the propane tank are both accessory structures. Our code requires that accessory structures be set back the same distance as principal structures. There are some codes that do provide that for certain types of small accessory structures, typically 100 square feet or less, sheds, things like that, might, might be placed closer to a property line than the principal structure. Our, our code does not. And I mention that because I think we should have perhaps a conversation a little later on about whether the planning board wants to explore the idea of that kind of an amendment going forward. But in any event, the code does require a 30-foot setback. The plan we received had a 17-foot setback for the propane tank. I spent some time on the phone with Bill Walters this morning. When you sort of work your way down through the zoning code definition of structure, which is basically anything placed on in or under the ground, and you sort of work your way back through the definition of building and the definition of accessory structure, the propane tank is in fact an accessory structure under our zoning code. The NFPA code, which Bill, in his role as building inspector, is charged with enforcement, has its own set of minimum standards for separation from property lines and from potential sources of ignition and all of that. He could certainly speak to that much more than I can. But in terms of the zoning code, it's pretty clear that a 17-foot setback for the propane tank, as the generator certainly would be outside of that 30-foot, but for the propane, propane tank, on the original plan that we received, would require an area of variance. The, I talked very briefly with Dawn before the meeting started, they've indicated that they have actually found a, a different location for the propane tank that is outside of that, that rear yard setback. So the plan, and I haven't really looked at it in any detail, you're seeing it here tonight, would locate the generator as well as the propane tank outside of that rear yard setback, which brings us back, just, now we're just talking a straight-up site plan amendment without the need for a variance, which is frankly a good place to be. Now, I have not done a workup of the, the application because materials we were working from at the workshop was a request, was a waiver. But it is my opinion that because of the nature of the project, and I, looking for some input from Bruce and from Bill, that it is possible, if the board agrees, and Bill and Bruce agree, for the board to grant a conditional amended site plan tonight, move the matter to the bottom of the line, let Dawn work out any engineering or other remaining environmental issues, if any, with Bruce and Bill, and get to the point where we can rapidly have a fairly simple site plan for chairman's signature so they could go forward with their project.
Okay, let, let's hear from the other consultants, and then we'll hear from the board and see if we can move on this.
Bill and I conducted a site visit on Tuesday. Based upon the drawings that we had available at that time, there are no really substantive environmental issues to contend with, there was a, as Neil described, a de minimis activity of, at this time, a concrete slabbed a tank with some bollards. The site has a very minimal amount of usable land before it goes into a very steep rock outcropping at the back. And then basically, it appears that the container or dumpster would be relocated more towards the existing well to accommodate. to accommodate the generator being installed in that little area there. And then, simply, a line would be cut into the pavement to get to an existing electrical panel. Doesn't seem that the disturbance would be greater than or anywhere near 5,000 square feet. There are no wetlands or wetland buffer associated with the activity at all.
Okay. And you have no objection to Neil's proposal for conditioned approval?
No, not at all.
Okay. Bill, do you have anything you want to add?
Bill Rhodey. We did take some photographs of the area. Like Bruce said, there's no wetlands on the site. The only thing that I was thinking about was noise as a factor, trying to have as a conditional approval, try to keep it down to 70 decibels. I don't know if you have a decimal rating on this particular generator or not. And the other question I had was about the size of the liquid propane tank. You know how many gallons is going to be holding?
I don't have any answer to that size.
Okay, because that determines what setbacks are required from NFPA.
Okay.
That's the only comments I really have.
All right. And you're on board for conditional approval if the board decides to take that one?
Yes, conditional approval is fine with me, yes, as long as we can work out and make sure that NFPA is in full compliance.
So, we would include these two items that you mentioned as conditions on, yeah, Neil just took them down. Okay, very good. Did you say you have the decimal rating there?
I do. It actually says 71, 71 decibels when we're reading.
I have a question.
So, slow it down 50 revolutions.
Bill, you can stay down there.
Bill, you took the pictures on the, so where the dumpster is now, that's where they're proposing to put the tank, where the dumpster is?
Yeah.
I have copies that I can distribute.
Okay. Well, maybe you can, maybe you can answer Janice's question.
So, the picture I'm looking at shows the dumpster in the rear of the bank. And I thought I heard that's what the proposal was, to put the propane tank there.
What we've done recently, and I won't spend a lot of time on this, is the existing dumpster enclosure is actually right here. You can see there's a curb, and there's the bank, and there's the drive-through. And the dumpster enclosure is here. We were going to shift it and put the generator behind it and put the propane tank over here, but as discussed, it needs to meet the side yard setback. So, in our revised proposal, what we're going to do is we're going to leave the dumpster enclosure where it is. We'll put the propane tank behind it, and we'll put the generator over by the well.
So, the propane tank now is proposed to go behind the dumpster?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, next to it. It depends on which way you look at it.
Would it be, is it going to be on the current pavement that's there now?
Show the picture.
It'll actually go in the island.
Oh, it's going to go from?
Right. It'll go in the mulch bed behind it. Not on that side, actually. Not here. It's going to go behind it. Between it, yeah, between the enclosure and the light pole.
Yeah. Janice, they're essentially swapping the original location of the generator. The propane tank is going there, and then the generator's being moved a little bit further out.
Right.
The problem with the propane tank is the need for separation from ignition sources, of which the generator is one, along with the lights and all the other stuff back there.
And I was concerned also to the parking lot, because there is a fair amount of traffic that goes back there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe, I guess a question for Bill?
Hey, Bill?
No, no, no.
Bill Walters.
I assume that NFPA has standards for protection of the tank, the way of bollards or whatever else that also have to be met.
Dawn, you want to give Bill the mic there?
Absolutely.
He's on the other one. That's all.
Bill Walters, building inspector, town of Kent. Yeah, we looked at the first set, so it looks like it's getting moved around. It looks like it's getting further back. But one of the things that I noticed in the previous plans, that they had barrier bollards up to protect the propane tank. Even though the tank is going behind the refuge enclosure, you would think that that would offer enough protection, but we're still going to need bollards around that tank.
That's what I was going to say.
So, when they start moving the dumpsters around and stuff like that, we're not worried about getting into there. Let's see the wells further away. And location to electrical, there's no electrical over on that end?
There's a light pole, but it's more than a few feet away.
Okay, so that should be okay as far as electrical code.
Thank you.
I would say, providing they put the bollards in for protection, I don't see a problem with it.
Thanks, Bill.
There isn't any danger when they, yeah, when they pick up the garbage, there isn't, is there a truck, does a truck come and pick that container up?
Generally, when they pick up the dumpsters, they either roll them out to the truck, or they latch them in, and a cable will empty the dumpster.
So, there isn't any potential that?
Right. I mean, with the bollards, I mean, right in the proposed, they have two bollards on the other side, on the driveway side, there should be at least another, two more bollards between the tank and the enclosure and on the end, so that in the event that they push the dumpster through, the bollards will offer protection to the tank.
Very good, Bill. Thank you.
Question.
Charlie, get on the mic, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. We were talking about the first proposal. We talked about a fence around it. That's just going to be opened? There's not going to be a fence around that also?
In the original proposal, I did not see a fence around the propane tank.
No, no, we did. At the workshop, we talked about that.
Okay. Putting fences around it generally would be combustible, and you don't want combustible materials around the propane tanks and stuff like that.
Well, the reason I ask is because if you look at the sewer system that we have in town, they have the propane tanks in there, and they have a fence around all of them.
The fencing where the sewer district is protects the equipment, not so much the, not so much the propane tank, but all the switches. It offers a security so nobody can go in and mess with the control panels and stuff like that. So, and there are bollards inside those for the protection of those propane tanks also, so.
The tank will be secured to the pad?
Yes. Yeah, it'll be, it needs to be installed as per NFPA.
So, I'm sorry, are you done, Charlie?
Yes.
Well, Bill, so were you asking for additional bollards between the propane tank?
Between the tank and the refuge fencing.
Okay, good. So, that way, if a truck backed up too far, it would stop it from pushing the container into the tank. Okay, that makes sense. Anybody?
I have a question. So, you're saying, and you just said earlier that they don't like to put propane tanks next to?
Ignition sources.
Yes, thank you. But at the same time, this is a refuge enclosure, and you're saying that it's going to be perfectly fine if we put these bollards in front?
Right. The bollards are generally a three-inch, four-inch pipe. They go in the ground about three, three-and-a-half feet, and they're filled with concrete, and they come up, I want to say 48 inches, they come up, and they're designed to protect, protect the tanks. They have two on the plans here now. If they add an additional two, one in the middle and one on the end, that should offer enough protection from that dumpster moving around if it had to get pushed in there.
So, you're saying with the installment of these, that this would not present a fire hazard? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, it would not. The bollards are there not so much for fire protection. The bollards are there to protect motor vehicles and moving objects.
Right, right. Well, I'm?
I mean, if you're talking about putting a wooden fence up between the two, I'm not...
No, not wooden fence, but it's right next to a dumpster with a lot of paper.
That's, that's okay.
It's okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Right. It'll have, it'll have a non-combustible top that generally lays over the top of it and everyone else. So, I understand where you're going with it, so, but it should be fine.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant or for the consultants? If not, I'll ask Neil if you'd just enumerate the conditions of the conditional approval that we're going to ask for a motion.
Yeah, the resolution, and again, I will follow this up with a written resolution, would be basically a recitation of what the application is, referencing the plans that we received tonight. They're both dated December 12, 2015. Overall site plan, alternative one, and then generator and propane tank plan, alternative two. So, those are the two plans that will be referenced in the resolution.
December 10, I believe.
I'm sorry?
December 10.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you said December 12, but maybe I missed it.
Oh, might be wishful thinking on my part, but that would be the weekend. So, yeah, so December 10. One of the conditions will be that they need to indicate the size of the tank, and as Bill pointed out, that will drive the setbacks for purposes of the NFPA standards, but not necessarily affect, otherwise affect the zoning setbacks. It does appear, based on the generator and propane tank plan, that they do have plenty of room. They've enumerated the setback from the rear property line at 30 feet and well beyond that for both the generator as well as the propane tank. They're required to meet NFPA standards anyway, and that would include, of necessity, I'm not sure that we, that we want to go through and try to figure out all of those. Bill has talked about the need for additional bollards. They have to satisfy him for purposes of the building permit. And so, the NFPA standards in terms of the bollards and the location, that will drive that portion of it. What this board is being asked is to approve this site plan with due consideration that there may be some additions in the form of the bollards, some of the other things we've talked about tonight, to make sure that they are in compliance with the NFPA standards. The other thing that we're asking for is information indicating, and I think it was a cut sheet that Dawn had, that the decibels, verifying the decimal levels for the generator that's been selected are 75 dBA or less. I'm sorry, decibels or less. Oh, and we would waive the public hearing.
Okay. Separate motion for waiving the public hearing, or we combine them?
You know what? Let's have a separate resolution. What I'll do is I will incorporate that into the written resolution, but I think it's important to put on the record that the Planning Board is waiving the public hearing on this site plan.
Okay, then I'll ask for a resolution, a resolution to waive the public hearing on this amended site plan application for Putnam Savings, Putnam County Savings Bank, amended site plan?
I'll move that.
Dennis?
I'll second it.
Phil? Do I need a roll call vote on the waiver?
Uh, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, waiver carries. Now, I'll ask for a motion to grant conditional approval of the amended site plan for Putnam County Savings Bank, the conditions being those enumerated by the town of Kent Planning Board, planning consultant just previously to the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Phil?
Second.
Dennis, second. This is a roll call vote. I vote aye. Janice?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Glenna?
Nay.
George?
Nay.
Motion carries five to two. And we will move this to below the line for administrative pursuit and get all the?
Okay. Actually, just for the, for the record, noting that this was a type-two action and that no environmental review was required.
No secret required. Right, okay. That'll be included in the resolution.
Yes.
Okay, so you know who to talk to. Okay, thank you. Mr. Rinn, you want to come up? Or Jack, one of you? David, did you get the votes on it? Okay, I wrote them down if you need them. Hey, Jack.
How you doing?
All right. So, this is for Goldfinn, Rinn, Project, Daffodil Lane, Kent, New York, erosion control plan review. And I think, Bruce, you had a memo with basically no comments, correct? And Bill Rhodey had a couple of comments in his report, basically having to do with drainage, location. Okay, do you want to?
Well, nothing has really changed. I guess Bruce went out and looked at the pond, which isn't there. In my memo following the plans, I requested waivers that were, the same waivers that were granted before with respect to the driveway. Mr. Rhodey indicated that he wanted some form of drainage at the base of the driveway. And I sent you a picture. I don't know if you got it. Right next to the driveway is a catch basin. So, we would propose to put a trench drain at the bottom of the driveway and pipe it into the catch basin. And that'll keep any drainage off the, off the road. And that's it?
Does that work for you, Bill?
Perfect.
Perfect?
That's what I like to hear.
Okay. Bruce, do we have something else on this?
Good, good. Good evening. I don't normally do driveway size of rule. However, there was a pond apparently at some time adjacent or near the driveway, but it really wasn't there. So, I'm happy to report to the board, there is no evidence that there was a pond or is a pond associated with the driveway. But in so doing and looking at the plans, it appeared that what had transpired was that there had been some work done on the site with respect to the driveway being installed without any history of a building permit or a driveway permit. And the code, as the board is aware, was changed. And what the code indicates is that if there was an existing building lot, but it did not have a driveway permit granted by this board, then, or waiver, then it would have to get a new waiver. And so, I'm for you to suggest to you that in order to move this forward, and the reason it did not go administratively last time the board may recall, is that there is a need to grant a new, if you will, driveway waiver, because it does exceed the 10%, and there's some additional changes that Bill Rhodey had identified as well. So, that's my synopsis of driveways.
Okay. So, procedurally, what does this mean, and what do you recommend?
Yeah, the driveway, or the roads and driveway section of our code authorizes the Planning Board to grant waivers from the normal 10% to allow up to 15%, provided the driveway, as I recall, is paved. I think, was that the only requirement, aside from paving?
Yeah.
Right, right. There were other, there were other requirements in there to allow that to happen. And so, the recommendation is because of the nature of the, of the road, the work that's already been done, is that a waiver is recommended for this project. They still need to give us, to allow them to go 15% pursuant to the conditions in the code for slope at the bottom and paving in those sections, or paving along the road where it does exceed 15%. So, the recommendation is to have the board issue the waiver to allow the project to go forward. Jack will provide some plans to show compliance with the, with the driveway section of our code.
What is the slope today? What is it?
It is, yeah, it's, well, it can't exceed 15. So, if they have to do work to knock it down to 15, that's part of the waiver requirement. So, yeah, it can't, it will never exceed 15.
Okay. So, do you need to write us a resolution?
I'll put something quick and dirty together after this, yes.
And when do we act on this?
It's a recommendation, then, to go forward. I haven't, I haven't actually been to the site, so is it a recommendation to have the board grant the waiver tonight? That way it allows Jack to continue working on his drawings? Yeah.
Of course, if we handle it administratively, if the board decides to do that. The only thing really pending is that waiver. If the board chooses to do that, then the board may also do that review.
Okay. Can we do that in one motion? Can we do that in one motion?
What he said.
One motion or two motion?
One sounds better.
Okay.
Yeah, so, right, so...
So all the consultants are on board with moving this forward, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions or comments?
What happens if the pond comes back?
And he has to come in for a swimming pool permit?
Yeah, the requirement is, is that it has to be stocked, so, yeah.
Oh, stocked, okay.
All right, so I'll ask for a motion to grant the waiver for the driveway specs, as Neil will enumerate in a memo to come, and to move the erosion control plan application below the line for administrative review.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you're good.
Thank you. Thanks for waiting.
All right, next item on the agenda is Licari Limatoni, am I saying that right? Erosion control and a SWP plan. And I believe we have memos on this one.
He's going to kill me.
Good evening, Robert Cameron, Putnam Engineering, representing the applicant Limatoni and Licari. They had inadvertently, were unaware of the requirement in the town account for an erosion control permit, and they wound up filling some of their yard. They received a notice that they needed to come to the town account planning board to get an erosion control permit. And I have submitted plans to address the concerns.
Okay, we have, we have memos from at least two consultants, Bill Rhodey and Bruce Barber. Guys want to find it out? See who comes up first?
I can bring the microphone over there.
Actually, might not be a bad idea.
Rob is correct in that, in that there was an excess of the fill installed in the rear yard that was the threshold to get an erosion sediment control permit. Bill and I, Bill Rhodey and I went out and looked at property on Tuesday, went with the property owners. Basically, a stop work order had been issued. There has been a silt fencing installed, some seed and some mulch, and some of the seeds just started to germinate on the site. But we made the recommendation to the applicant that they install erosion blankets on the steeply sloping embankment areas. There was some beginnings of rail or vertical erosion, as well as some horizontal cracking which suggests that the hillside may start to slough down. And so we want to make sure that doesn't happen and everything gets stabilized accordingly. And when that's completed, then the property owners can contact the building inspector and it can be re-inspected and it can then be deemed stable. There is on Rob's plans showing a drainage area or swale or ditch. I went out and had a look at that, and there is no jurisdictional town, wetland or wetland buffer associated with that. There was a small amount of, and a very small amount of asphalt and some brick within the fill. The applicant indicated that the source of the fill had been represented to them as being clean. We didn't see anything other than a small amount of asphalt and brick. We're going to ask the applicant to provide something in writing that that's all that's been delivered and to refrain from accepting any CND or any other type of materials other than clean soil moving forward. The rear yard also is where the septic system is located, and there was some concern that as part of the trucks going back and forth delivering the fill, that they might have gone over areas of the leaching system. So we made the recommendation to the property owner to contact their septic contractor to determine what inspections, if any, might need to be required to ensure the system's going to be operational in the future and not cause them any difficulties. And additionally, the applicant, when we were speaking with them, suggested they want to do a little bit more work in the rear yard beyond the limits of disturbance of the existing fill section. So we suggested to them that they incorporate whatever additional work, tree removal, fill or grading, into this existing permit application so that the entire project in total can be considered.
Okay, so has a plan been submitted to you showing all of this work, or no?
Mr. Chairman, the plan that we have, I think, is the one that Rob showed, which basically does not show the future work that the applicant has indicated wanted to.
Okay, so it makes sense to get that all on one permit?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Bruce?
Yeah, I see here that they have additional plans to remove some trees. What kind of trees? Is there any specifications about trees that cannot be removed?
There were, at the time, Glenna, there were three trees marked with ribbon in the backyard that they indicated they'd like to remove. It's very sparsely wooded in the backyard, mostly wooded areas beyond their property and beyond a stone wall at the rear. Certainly, the board can condition certain trees that would remain, let's say above six inches DVAH, which is often what you've done in the past. That would certainly not preclude them from developing a lawn, but also keeping some trees in place to hold the soil back and things like that. That's fine if the board wants to do that.
So is that going to be addressed?
Yes.
Okay.
Bruce, how bad is the erosion problem? Do they need to terrace that area?
They talked a little bit about terracing in the back ultimately, but it wasn't at the time of inspection, Phil, and then that's why we're anxious to get that hillside stabilized with the erosion blankets because there is a beginning of some erosion, both on vertical senses, rails, as they said, as well as horizontal.
And when you said seed, did you mean lawn?
Basically, what we'd have them do would be put in probably a 50/50 contractor's mix of annual and perennial briogas. I think we're beyond, even though it's so warm these days, we're beyond when anything's going to be germinating in the spring. But you want to precede that before you put the blankets down, so when the spring weather comes, it'll be able to germinate properly. But the blanket really there is now is a structural component to hold the soil.
Thank you.
Okay, I know we still have to hear from Bill Rhodey, but what, where do we stand procedurally as far as any actions that this board may be asked to take?
This would be an erosion sediment control permit by the board unless, of course, you wish to determine to have it handled administratively. That would mean, of course, mean that you would waive any public hearing on it and it would be addressed by the consultants.
Okay, do you have any recommendation on that?
At this particular time, I think I'd like to reserve judgment until we see the entire plan, make sure that it's more de minimis than anything, and then we...
So keep it above the line and don't vote on it yet?
Yeah, we'll see if Rob can get in the final plan, then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Bruce.
Sure.
Just do it on the mic.
On the plan here, I did indicate where they want to do future grading in the back. It's hard to tell, but the existing contour lines are very light in here. So this is the proposed future grading towards the back.
So Rob, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the rear stone wall back here, and the existing grates basically are sloping over in this direction here.
Draw section.
Right. Right. I'm sorry. The applicant indicated they wanted to do, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they wanted to basically take this and have it be more of a long surface. They might want to terrace this as well down, Rob, kind of stepwise. So it looks like they maybe have some different plans of what may be represented here. If this is exactly what they want to do moving forward, then that's fine, but I think they might want to do a little bit more than what's represented here. At least that's what we talked about the other day.
The other question I had is, instead of an erosion control blanket, I did notice from your pictures that were taken, that I think a lot of the water's coming down along this area. If I were to put a silt fence up along this area, I think, I think it's a velocity issue is probably what it's doing. If I were to put silt fences up along here, I think that might eliminate some of the scouring that's happening over this short section here. How do you feel about that?
Microphone, please. Sorry. The silt fence will trap, you know, this is still sparsely vegetated up here, so trap a little bit of the particle movement of the silt going towards this direction. But the silt fence really isn't designed to hold the water back, and I'm going to defer to Bill on this, but the soil is so steep there and it's not been compacted. We're just worried, and we talked about this at the house, that they're going to lose some of their soil downhill, and they, and they don't want to do that. They took a lot of effort and time to put it there. So our thinking at the time is put the erosion blankets up there, pin them, you know, get it healed in at the top here, Rob, so it's actually bent into the hillside, so the water will go over it. It's kind of a pretty, pretty easy installation, not a lot of area. But I'll defer to Bill on that.
Yeah, it's pretty much a one-on-one slope right now.
Why don't you get, get on the microphone there, Bill? Thank you.
It's pretty much a one-on-one slope right now, and so that's what we're concerned about, is this type of erosion that may occur, particularly if there's a good rainfall coming down, which happens in the springtime all the time. The other part of it too is that what we're looking for is some kind of an analysis in terms of runoff right here, if there should be a swale on the property line at the toe of the slope. And if you do that, and you're collecting some stormwater, maybe consider something over here in terms of, you know, is there enough area over here for it just to kind to dissipate? Or would you need some kind of a rain garden or some kind of a bio basin? But that's pretty much what we talked about. And the other part, we said about the septic system, you know, to have it checked out thoroughly because some equipment must have gone over it. I don't know how far, you know, we're supposing if the septic system comes out quite a bit, at least 50 feet from the house or 60 feet, so you're almost out to the shed right now with that. But you don't have any as-built drawings of the septic system, so it's very important to mark it out, check and see if it's okay, have them rod the lynch field pipes and to make sure it's okay and you're safe, okay? And that's pretty much it.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay?
Thank you.
Rob, do you feel like you got what you need in terms of direction?
They could, they could, sure.
I did have one more question. Bill had mentioned something about a report, an erosion and sediment control report. Typically, we don't do the reports for an erosion, for an erosion sediment control plan. That's usually for a full-out SWPPP. I just wanted to get clarification on that, if, for this type of project, this scale-up project, if a full report, an engineering report is necessary. I don't think it is because I was looking through the code to see if that was in there, and I didn't find it. I just wanted clarification, what type of report he's looking for, and if I could, if there is a report required, if I can have a waiver for it because of the nature of this project. Most of the information is actually on the plan. I don't know if there's a necessity for me to generate, you know, a thick report, which I would typically do on a full-blown erosion control plan, you know, that involves like over an acre or more.
Right. I'll punt to the consultants on this. Neil, Bruce, Bill?
Just do the clarifications, you know, for terms of that runoff right there, or terms of swale. Don't go into the figure for it, remove all that driving stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Yes.
All right?
Good call. You may want to have to read.
Well, I was thinking you should probably sit over there, and that might, that might reach you then.
So to be, I just want to make sure that he's on the same page. But I would suggest the board be looking at is, number one, the direction of stabilizing the site immediately, which would mean installing erosion blankets and many, and any of the things that Rob might feel is appropriate to ensure that we don't have any erosion and sediment lost off the site during the winter months. And then, secondly, Rob can get together with his client, determine what the big picture might be in terms of the overall site, and if necessary amend the plans. It can be back before the board again once that's completed and we have verification the site's been stabilized, and the board can then make that determination if you want to entertain it or handle it administratively.
Okay, so do, do you need an action by us tonight so that they can do those emergency ...
I don't think so. I think that Bill may refer, well, to refer to that in the context of stop work order, correct, in terms of solving...
Yeah, it's a stop work order so they can do the work.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just carry this over. You'll, you'll get together with Bruce and Bill, and hopefully at the next meeting we move this below the line, and you'll just deal with them from then on. Good?
Good.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Wellington Properties. This is, oh, this is the ice cream shop, right? This was another last-minute time extension.
Yeah, you know, and I agree with, agree with the chairman's comments. I think we need to more prominently display somewhere in our application package the need for the applicants to be diligent about. It's not that hard. You get done with a meeting, you look at your calendar, you plug in a date.
Right.
And you make the appropriate submission in time rather than, you know, submitting letters the day of the meetings. So what I did very quickly this afternoon was to work up a resolution to grant the time extension. I just wanted to note, you know, in another, in a prior life, I did a lot of COBOL and RPG programming, and I realized very quickly that computers, as powerful as they are, they also allow you to make mistakes very, very quickly. Hence, the title, when I did the grab, I grabbed the resolution that I had previously done for Hilltop Estates. It should read Wellington Properties, matter of Wellington Properties at the top.
Mine says Wellington Properties.
Does yours? Okay, all right, that's good. So maybe I gave you the right one. But, so what this does is that it grants the two 90-day extensions forward from tomorrow, which is the date of the expiration, to June 7th, 2016. And I think, I think this was Insight Engineering handled this one? The request, the request came in from the owner today, but I think Insight...
Was it Insight? I think it was.
So what, what I guess I would request, Vera, I'll, when you send the copy of this resolution over to the owner, maybe send a copy to Insight asking that they calendar the extension request in May for the June meeting, if that becomes necessary. Actually, they would have to request the extension in May because June 7th, I think, is the Tuesday before our meeting. So in other words, that, that date falls before our June meeting.
So they, they would have to file for the May meeting, correct?
I'm sorry?
They would have to file to be, to be on our May agenda?
Yeah, they would submit the request in April for the May meeting.
Right.
And then we would revisit this whole thing again.
So that way, right, okay.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
It sounds like that they may be done by then, actually.
I, yeah, you know, he provided us a list with, of the things that they've accomplished. So it, my guess is that they'll probably be done. There might be a few little doodads that they're waiting for better weather in the springtime to, to complete.
Seeds that are counted towards February.
Okay, all right, yeah, it may very well be that he gets his, he gets a CO and he's done, but...
Okay.
Okay?
And while we're on the subject of the, you know, these last-minute requests for extensions, Neil and I had an email exchange today, and maybe we can talk about this at our next workshop, but it might make sense to add something to the application packet, like a single sheet with big, bold letters stressing the applicant's responsibility to file in a timely manner if they're going to need extensions. And stating clearly that we're not going to grant them if they're not filed in time.
Right.
It's going to cost them money, they're going to have to reapply.
Why do we have to hold their hands?
Well, we won't be holding hands. We're telling them, you know, we've basically been, been holding their hands, but we're going to stop.
Yep.
Because we're mean.
Yeah, you gotta be mean.
No, but it is, it's, it's extra work for the consultants.
Last minute.
Yeah, we don't get to review these things, they end up on our...
Well, and I, and I typically include as a, you know, a notation or a condition of all of our resolutions. You know, the requirement that, you know, the extension requests have to be made in writing, you know, before the expiration date. And people, I don't, maybe they're just now reading the conditions of the rules, it's in there.
Right.
We got to, we got to figure out something else to do because it's...
Our pathway to this is going to be to hammer this home to the engineering firms. That's 80, 80 or 90% of the applications.
Right, right.
No, if one or two of them don't get an extension, everyone will get around to it.
Right.
Hopefully it won't come to that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if it's the occasional, you know, owner who's, who's representing himself, showing up pro se, fine, but the majority of these, they're, they're professionals. It's a simple matter.
They have representation, they should have.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Neil. All right, so I'll ask for a motion to approve the town account planning board resolution of time extension pertaining to amended site plan approval on a matter of Wellington Properties.
I make the motion.
George?
I'll second it.
So Phil?
Yep.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. I vote aye. Janice?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Charlie?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Glenna?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, motion carries. Pass it down to Vera, please. Thank you, Neil.
Okay.
And I think, Bruce, you're going to give us a rundown on the below-the-line status of various permit application reviews?
The Polish Deli, we have no additional information on. In speaking with Bill Walters, I suspect they're still working with the health department determining what type of fixtures are appropriate, et cetera, but nothing really new has been presented to the town. The Deli company, I believe, Neil, your requirements with respect to the enclosure have been met, correct me if I'm wrong, so that's going to be moving forward towards to bond. Kent Countryside Nursery should not really be here, they've operating, they're selling trees on Route 52 at present. Lima, again, is, is a commercial site plan, we haven't seen anything new on that recently. Bybin still apparently is working through their septic system questions and has not submitted anything new. And the same holds true for both the Omara application, as well as the Shilkoff Krabitz application, we have not yet seen anything new. That's where we are.
That's it. Any other business before the board tonight? If not, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.